I see everybody but Craig. Had you heard from Craig that he was gonna attend or not, Jess?
No, I didn't hear either way.
He's probably just getting logged in. Well, I'm gonna start sometime as much as I can and we'll begin, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting with the city of Wabashaw, Tuesday, October 6th, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We do not have any guest speakers tonight, but we can certainly hear public comment. The procedure for public comment is just to simply state your name and place of residence for the record and go ahead and make comment to council. Do we have any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Any changes or additions to the agenda? I know staff is working on some things that are being updated daily. Anything you'd like added, Jess or Wendy or Tyler? How about, yeah, go ahead.
I think we had everything added earlier this afternoon.
Great, okay. And Jess, those additional bills, are they in this, are they in these warrants? Do you want to say anything about those?
They are all on the published agenda warrants.
Okay, sounds good. Any council additions to the agenda or changes?
Do we want to formally add an agenda item for notifying of the polling change position?
Yep, that's good. Well, let's do that and have an update. So that'll be general business seven. Okay, anything further? Okay. I don't know, it feels like it's been a long time since we've met last, even though I know it's just a month, but we've had special meetings in between. Certainly, a positive one with regards to the funding application for the Highway 60 reroute project. There's a little update on that, but I'm not going to speak to it because I don't really understand the implications. It sounds like we're in a different category of review than was initially understood to be where we should be. And Brian, Mom will follow up and let staff update council. But we had a special meeting, very importantly, to make a, to, I should say, respond to a late request to move polling place for Ward Three from the Maple Grove Apartments, which is managed by Sentra. We adopted a resolution to do so, to move that. That's a very important news item. I'm glad to see Abby's on. We will be communicating further and we'll leave that in general business item 10-7. But suffice it to say, that's a very important, noteworthy decision with which we need to inform the public. Community spread is a little bit more disruptive in Wabashaw. I think people are seeing it. The schools have had some case transmission, some positive cases, so that's relevant in terms of the impact on people's lives. Certainly, it's been here the whole while, but in terms of new diagnoses, I guess we're just feeling it a little bit more. My child is home quarantined due to a contact with a positive case. And it can be really disruptive for, obviously, for school kids, but certainly for working people as well. We had, I think it was in this, just this month, it seems like a long month, US Congresswoman Angie Craig was here checking in on constituents and identifying how things are going with businesses. She was able to stop into a few local businesses. And then shortly thereafter, Barb Haley was here, our representative to the Minnesota House. Barb foreshadowed something that the CGMC, which is Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, explicitly spoke to in their newsletter today, and that is that the bonding bill is still a possibility. There, you know, there's a lot of press related to the bonding bill and stalling, et cetera. But the reality is there's a quiet period where all the bonds are, after the bonds are satisfied. And that quiet period has now ended. I believe it was September 15th or 16th, something like that. But the governor's emergency declaration lapses again on October 12th, and the CGMC anticipates a fifth session, special session. And their communication did not rule out something positive related to a bonding bill. It will likely, because of the Republican concern about the deficit, it will likely be possible if they can be making budgetary decisions that limit the state's deficit. And that's exactly what Barb foreshadowed. So I still remain optimistic that our bonding language would be adopted. We don't have any reason to believe it wouldn't be, except that, you know, the bonding process obviously is a significant one. I'm rebooting the conversation on childcare. It was suspended in COVID because there was so much uncertainty. The schools obviously were in, and I should say, the schools have been active participants in that discussion. And as they regrouped completely on distance learning and then regrouped again over the summer for their plans for the fall, it didn't seem polite to press on them with this issue that we don't totally have our heads around yet, which is childcare. But the consultants that we have worked with through the process have remained in touch with me. And we, I'm happy to say that there is a desire to have those conversations again, including sales business and leadership from our schools. So that's a good, I'm happy that's not dead in the water. We're gonna make some progress here, hopefully even before the end of the year. If you read the newspaper today, you already saw there are still announcements posted for Wabashaw and Winona County small businesses related to rent payments, utility, mortgage, et cetera, payroll reopening expenses that are a result of COVID. That assistance is being administered by Sentra. And so their website, et cetera, is posted in the paper. There's also community flu shot clinics starting October 12th and kind of running through the end of the year, both at the Wabashaw Fire Hall, which will be great. I'm glad that is gonna work out there, as well as Nelson's, I think Nelson's Fire Hall. And that too is well announced in the paper and I'm sure on Facebook. And in very good news, the food shelf is reopened and their grand opening is tomorrow from four to five. Obviously masks and social distancing, but it's very good to see that their board and volunteers have really been re-energized around their new location. And so they'll be able to serve currently. One day they'll be open to the public. They still have limitations on volunteers who are willing and feel able to be in that volunteer role. So if anybody is looking for a volunteer opportunity, the food shelf would welcome additional volunteers to make their services available more days. That's it for me. And we'll go to committee reports. I'll start with, Tim, can I start with you with regards to planning?
Sure. We met on September 8th. We approved a CUP for a guest cottage out on Thousand Cooley Way. We also did talk about our Solar Garden Moratorium and good discussion on that. I think we'll be adding some performance standards to our ordinance, which will be forthcoming either at our October 13th meeting or our November meeting, one or two. But otherwise, that is about all we covered.
Okay. And John, Port Authority updates for the council?
Yes, Port Authority met on the 15th of September. Our agenda mostly based around our discussion about staffing for the Port Authority going forward. Now that we're looking at a new, the possibility of a new city administrator, we're looking at possibly restaffing the Port Authority with someone more dedicated to that. And what came of it, what of the discussion was that in October, we're gonna revisit what the Port Authority identifies as the major needs of the Port Authority and the directions that we're gonna look to go in the coming future. That'll help us better speak and meet with those prospective candidates that may be our staff going forward. And I'm looking forward to it. So it's a big step. I felt that it was, we've got the momentum going forward to make something happen with that.
Good. Very good to hear. Brian, utilities. Good. Okay, thanks, John. Brian, utilities updates?
Yeah, we had a record timed utilities meeting yesterday. It weren't in minutes, and that was all our business when we were out.
I'm muted. And you're muted.
Thank you. Tony, what can you tell us from streets and parks?
We did not have a park board meeting this month. We might have one next month. We'll see what the agenda has to say about that, if there's some items that we need to discuss. Street Commission met today. We talked about, the library had made a 15-minute parking spot request for pickups and drop-offs, which was a pretty good idea. So I'm gonna work with Bev on placement of that. That was approved. And then we talked about 2001 Sterling plow trucks, some hydraulic repairs that we're gonna have on that. And we're gonna talk about that tonight as well. And the brush dump burning, we talked through that scenario, which we will talk about tonight as well. And then we got some basketball nets, temporary and permanent mounted ones that are right on the edge of the street. Sometimes they're out in the street. And so I'm gonna be sending out letters to those homeowners and kind of making our ordinance, you know, explaining our ordinance to them about nuisance objects being in the road. And obviously, now we want kids to be out playing, being able to enjoy the outside. We just don't, we don't want objects in the street that can get hit by cars or plow trucks or a street sweeper. So I'm gonna work through that. And that's it for that. Are we gonna be able to talk during the budget discussion later as far as staff? I think you're muted.
Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, that should work. Yep, staff update there. Okay, yep.
And I apologize, I apologize for the brush dump and the plow truck. Them two agenda items were enrolling in between myself and City Hall, so they did not get put on the agenda. So kind of short notice, but none of it's too overwhelming. We won't be able to figure out what I think. So that's all I got.
We know those, we knew they were coming at some point, so that's not too bad of a surprise. Tony, if you would just educate us, because I don't really know where this belongs, but I've had a citizen reach out a couple times related to a tree plan or a forestry plan. Is that the kind of thing that parks should receive feedback about? Where does that belong?
Uh, let's see, tree plan, we've never ever visited that. Obviously, with the emerald ash borer and removal of 950 trees approximately along the city boulevards and parks, that might be something that can be visited again. I know I have some volunteers that are set up to help us do a mass planting. And I'm working on a nursery right now on about 100 different, or well, about 100 trees that we can start planting this fall. It's the best time to do it. So, but as far as a tree plan, that's not been talked about, no. And I can check into that and get back to you.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, the citizen, I really appreciate this, brought up that there may be resources. I think he referenced Plainview had received a grant with Blanden support, which we would certainly be a good candidate for a Blanden grant, given how much municipal employee participation there was in our Blanden leadership program. And so I asked him to share what he knew, and I'll make sure you get it, Tony.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I bring up something on parks? Couple of years ago, Tony, I asked about the feasibility of putting up a basketball court in Bruger Park. There's enough room there. You're talking about the, those temporary basketball backboards that people put in their driveways. Can we look at the possibility of, at least explore how much it might cost to put in a basketball court, at least a half court in Bruger Park? There's a lot of kids in that area, in the Trailer Park and in the Maple Grove Apartments. So I just thought that's probably a nice area to, you could get a lot of use out of it down there.
I'd have to go, I'd have to go back, Craig, and look at what information I gathered. But I believe I got a quick estimate from Brian, our city engineer, and the park board looked at the cost and also that our plans with Athletic Field down there. And I think we were kind of caught in a jam there on spending that amount of money on one side of town versus a centralized location. But I'd have to, I'd have to go back and I can dig that up and see what became of that.
Yeah, I think centralized location isn't really gonna work, because the kids have to go down there. That usually doesn't work if you can put them in several locations around town. If we have one behind City Hall and one down at Athletic Field and one out in Bruger Park, you'd have the area covered. You know, I don't know, a pole on a backboard doesn't cost that much. Everybody's got them in their driveways. So it's probably just a matter of what type of paving you put down for the basketball court itself. That's all. I just think, yeah, we should revisit that. I think, you know, that's a worthy thing. That helps you and gets the temporary backboards out of the driveways so you can plow.
Thanks, Craig. Um, committees, who am I missing? I think that's everybody. I guess I can say from the HPC, I don't think to give an update, but I really should. We are looking for two commissioners and we have two interested parties. I just can't seem to pin them down to get a bio and a formal yes. But I anticipate that by our November meeting that I should be able to do that. And we'll welcome those individuals to attend our next meeting, not as acting commissioners. But there's nothing significant as far as decision-making that we would be, you know, short a quorum or anything. But I'm just glad we have two potential candidates. So that's good news. And I am so sorry, but I forgot to, I maybe forwarded this, Wendy, but I didn't notice it was missing. I do need to add an appointment to the meeting, to the agenda if we still can, and that would be for Jane Dick to join the ambulance commission?
She's on the consent.
Very good. Thank you. I missed it when I looked through consents. Appreciate that. It came on early in the month. Super. So anyway, commission, I really, really appreciate when people step forward and are interested in commissions. And also when those, you know, staff or commissioners involved in their, in the work of the commissions reaches out to people they think would be good additions. All right. Any other updates from commissions or staff? Do you have anything, Darren or Ed, that you want us to know about? That's not on the agenda already. I know you've got agenda items coming.
I guess, well, at the ambulance station, we're actually very pleased to have brought the Kellogg first responders down, started doing our education with us instead of doing it separately. This was our first month having to do that, and it was, it was pretty fun. It was great to see new faces and great to see them acting and having fun with us as a crew.
Good news.
Like to welcome them and hopefully it keeps good relations with everyone.
Good, good, good. All right. Hearing nothing further. Do we have any staff report in lieu of an administrator's report? Or have you guys worked your needs into the agenda?
I would say, I would say we worked everything into the agenda. Everything's going great at City Hall right now.
Sounds good.
Can I ask where we're at with the administrative hire? You're gonna do an update on that?
We have at least seven applications. I think they all meet the criteria. We are just trying to get Brian and Wendy and John and I together, and we're four busy people. So we were thinking it might be tomorrow. That time is still, I think, held. But we're, I think if we can hang on, the four of us after this and make sure we've got something scheduled for this week, then we'll further the process. We actually, several of the applications just came in really in the last few days. I didn't, until, I wanted to meet, you know, Monday or Tuesday, but I really didn't feel like we had sufficient applications to do so. And now here we do. So that's good news.
Last month, we talked about a checklist and we also talked about an ad hoc committee. Has the committee put together yet or has the checklist put together yet?
Yep, yep. The checklist is essentially the memo that we were, that we were given by our council. You know, they do a lot with regards to advising on hires, municipal hires. And we're working through that. And the ad hoc committee is the personnel group that was, that was determined by council. So that's John, Brian, me and Wendy. If anybody wants to see the applications and isn't already getting them, you can just let Wendy know that. And then I think we'll give direction to the next steps, because we will want some level of screening. And then, of course, we're gonna move into that interview phase, and that's what we need to deliberate in our next meeting. But now that we have sufficient number of candidates, I think we can do that. Before it was hypothetical, now we're really gonna be talking out a timeline for interviews. Because that will be, you know, that'll be an undertaking, scheduling-wise. So I feel like that's good news. All right. Okay, then we have our consent agenda, which includes our city council minutes from our regular meeting of September 1st, our special city council meeting, special meeting minutes from August 27th. That was with regards to the grant application, federal grant application for the trunk Highway 60 reroute. Our September 21st special council meeting minutes, oh, I might have these mixed up. Hang on. Budget workshop was the 27th, and then the 9/21 was the grant application. 9/28 was the meeting related to the request for the polling location change. We have the warrants and the additional bills that Jessica notified us about. We have a liquor license for West Side Tavern, and we have the ambulance commission appointment right there in front of my face, which I somehow didn't see when I was looking at the agenda. And that is for Jane Dick, who is well-qualified. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move. Second.
I think that was, I was away from my Zoom. I think that was Tim and then John. Great.
Correct.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And we'll take a roll call vote.
All right.
Yes.
Breedmeyer?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Sula?
Yes.
And Dean, Meyer?
Yes. Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Very good. We have no public hearing at tonight's meeting. Under general business item 10, we have a couple goofy ones. 10-0, 10-0-8, we have the brush dump burning, which Tony has foreshadowed for us. And I think everybody's been privy to the direct complaints from a couple citizens. I think at least one business. So Tony outlined this for us nicely, and he's brought it to our attention, you know, throughout the year. I think everybody remembers in the spring, we had this, essentially interruption in service from the vendor that would otherwise have been grinding, piling, hauling and incinerating. And so we've sort of been punting this year. Tony, do you want to describe, you know, your, the concerns you want to address from your standpoint? And obviously, if anybody wants to discuss ideas, Tony has outlined a few. One is an incinerator, and I don't know that that's come to council's formal agenda, but the possibility of actually purchasing an incinerator that we would share with another community, that's a smokeless piece of equipment, as well as some other options, including shutting the brush dump down or, you know, needing to have a charge to cover cost of disposal, et cetera. Tony, what do you want to frame up for us so that we have a full understanding of the issue?
I think you've covered some of it.
All right.
No, that's, so I think everybody is kind of aware of the history from March until now on why we're burning. Is there any questions on that from anyone? Okay. So the good news is all of the old material that has, that has been sitting there for about two and a half years is gone. The last time we burnt was probably the worst of it, and that was the smokiest. We did sort out as much as we can, and like I say, that's gone and disposed of. We do have a decent stockpile that's been coming in, obviously, over the last week and a half. But what I noticed was, and I don't know if we want to keep burning or not, but the point that I wanted to make was the stuff that I burnt the last time, the first part of the pile was new stuff that had came in, and then there was a couple piles from the old stuff. And so the new, the newer brush that was brought in, that burnt out fairly quick and was gone, it's the old piles that sat and smoldered. So I want to take that into consideration if we're gonna keep burning temporarily this year or what. The other, the other idea that's came up, and I've talked with the supervisor from Plainview and then also Lake City Public Works, Lake City passed on some information on a burner. And it's basically about the size of a semi-trailer. It sits on the ground. You keep loading it. It's got certain downdraft ventilation on it, keeps the fire good and hot, and it burns, burns it fairly quick and pretty much smokeless. However, that machine, the size that would be in our benefit is about $127,000. And you need some sort of a truck to move it, which we don't have. And I doubt that any one of, three of our towns have a truck to, a semi to move it. Not saying that that can't be worked around, but that is just one far idea that's out there in this whole scenario. I actually did talk to Wabashaw Santa Gravel about an alternative site. And there was some agreement on how we could work this out. There's two areas, and one would be kind of where the corner pit is, you know, behind Dairy Queen back there in the Carl's, they call it the Carl's Pit. And the other option would be across from the high school, the corners own all of that farmland in that farm site that's adjacent to the high school, which is out in the open. And there was some talk about if we came up with an agreement in an area, we'd fence it in and we'd possibly pay a certain lease fee to use the site. We'd burn it once or twice a year with the fire department and be done with it. The problem that I have, I'm burning down, basically down in a hole, and it's, it's not working the best as far as wind. I can have a wind direction all set up, ready to go, and I start burning, and it doesn't take much to change it to get it swirling, and the next thing you know, it's in the neighborhood. We did have Wabashaw Santa Gravel. They had concerns about their employees over in the shop being in the smoke and their vehicles getting ash on it, which I totally understand. And then we had one resident on the west side, and then also the hospital got a few whiffs of it in their air exchanger. And that happened two different nights. And so I kind of want to stay away from that. The other option is, you know, they quoted us $28,000 this year to grind up what we had. And we spent about, I think we spent $18,000 or $19,000 on grinding, and it wasn't worth grinding the rest of it, because obviously it was rotten junk. So that leads me to the next point. Is there a consensus that we want to keep the brush dump open for our residents? I would most likely say yes. Any feedback from anyone on that?
Yeah, I'd be lost without that place, so I'd like to keep it open. I do like the idea of moving it to burn it. And then maybe if we're only gonna do it once or twice a year, try to schedule it in cold weather. Everybody's gonna have their windows shut anyway, so like, beginning of winter, end of winter kind of the deal would be good.
Yeah, I like the idea of it being out by the school out there, that's another corner pit too. That sounds like a good location for it, especially if it's only done a couple times a year.
Yeah, I think we have to have a place for people to bring their brush, or we're gonna find it everywhere.
I kind of figured that that was something that we want to keep going. Go ahead, Tim, if you have.
So I would agree with everybody said. I think the alternate location, either the one behind the Dairy Queen back a little farther or even the high school, I think are both acceptable. At least they're out of the way. I just think that we need to agree with Brian about probably in the wintertime more than anything else.
Okay. Do, do we want to charge larger contractors for depositing material in the brush dump? And the only odd thing to that is I don't let anybody dump in the brush dump unless they're bringing city material in. Sometimes I catch people from the sand prairie out of town. There's a lot of people now that, they call me. They said, hey, there's a truck coming from the prairie. This is the color. They got a trailer falling, and I can keep an eye out for it. But I don't really necessarily like the idea of charging a commercial guy that's in Wabashaw cutting trees down that normally would be from the city anyways. So is that anything that pops up in anybody's head about charging a dump fee? Or not?
Do you know anything about that in similar nearby cities, Tony? What do you know about other communities' dump, brush dumps?
I have not checked into that yet. I haven't gotten that far. I kind of wanted to, before I put a lot of time and effort in this, I kind of wanted to see what, and I know, I'm kind of asking you guys a loaded question, because I don't have any information on it. But, you know, I don't know if it would be like a permit, a yearly permit where, you know, say it's $500 or $1,000 and you can dump all the brush in there from your commercial business, although it's from within city limits. That's just things that pop in my head.
Tony, I think that cost will just get passed on to the residents anyway. If they've gotta pay a fee to dump, then the city residents will pay, which in essence is us paying anyway, so. If they've got to pay a fee to dump, then the city residents will pay, which in essence is us paying anyway. So. Maybe not, maybe keep it the way it is.
Yeah, I would imagine that that.
Tony, I would agree.
Right.
Yeah, Tony, I got a question for you. This is Dean. It's not so much the commercial and residential individuals. It's just the fact that we were two and a half years behind, wasn't it?
Well, correct, but the, the, the main, the main stickler to this whole thing is. Dean, we used to have a contractor come in about every year or a year and a half and they would grind up. 80% of what we have and they would load it on trucks and they would haul it to the incinerator up in the Dakota County. And that would pay for this whole operation. The only thing that I paid for was the transportation. For them to come down in their diesel fuel, which is anyways from a thousand to $1,500 per year. Now with the Emerald Ash Bore up in the cities, they're going to sit up there. In one spot all year long and they're going to take the easy work. They don't want to come down here. Especially when we're on the very low lying area of where they come. If we want them to come in from now on is what I'm going to tell that's going to cost us money. Per hour.
No, I was talking about local commercial tree trimmers. They don't bring in that much material. It was just the fact that. We got two and a half years behind and we had the ash pour through town. So that created a backup. Otherwise we were okay, weren't we?
Not sure if I under, I mean, we're going to. We're going to get brushed in no matter what. And when you look at our city limits, it goes out quite a bit. It's not just people in boulevards. You know, some people might be out in there. They're in the country, but they're still in city limits. So I mean, some of it kind of adds up sometimes, but.
So if I hear you correctly, Tony, you're saying we were okay because we had a cost effective. Vendor available and we don't have that anymore. So we basically have to innovate. And you're looking for direction, you know, if, if we want you to go the incinerator route, you're not going to investigate burn piles in other locations. And if we want burn piles in other locations, you know, that's what we need to focus on. So.
I think the incinerator is the last, the last option I would say.
Yeah.
Should I burn anymore this year? Should I try and stockpile it? You know, obviously it's kind of a guess on how long this is going to take me to set up, but I, I can, I can start talking to the corners and see. When I can get this lined up, if it's going to be next spring. You know, it's kind of up in the air, I guess.
I put it off as long as you possibly can. I just don't think. Burning it in, in where it's been burned is, is a good idea anymore.
Okay.
And I think.
Yeah, Tony, go ahead and go ahead, Craig.
Dairy Queen place is still pretty close to, there's residences all around. There's residences up on Skyline Drive, residences out on Cooley Way. It's still drifting to town too. I. I'd like to get it out of town as far as we can if we're going to burn it. So the school. Property or the one across from the school seems okay.
Okay.
I'd say no more burning this year and then work on getting that out by the school.
I agree with Jeff.
And then we'd have, we'd probably, I'd have to, just keep in mind, I'll have to hire somebody to haul that brush out. You know, out that way or whatever, when we get something set up. So I'll start working on that and see what I can find out in the next couple of weeks. I, I wanted to.
You know, whatever.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say whatever direction it takes. Obviously we need a better, we need sort of a, a public communication. About this so that people understand. And I think one of the, you know, there weren't a lot of residents, as everybody knows, they just, I think they started to get a little bit frantic because they didn't know when this was going to stop. If this is, is this forever? It's sort of, it was kind of the tone. And so I think whatever, whatever happens, you know, if it's well planned, it should also be well communicated so that, so that folks know it's. You know, to have, I think we smelled it at our house one time. And if you know it's going to happen twice a year, that's very different than it feels like every nice weekend. You know, at your house. So yeah, just a way to communicate even maybe directly with residents within a certain proximity because there are the homes on the. You know, the river side of the, of the school and there's not much, there wouldn't be anything. You know, impeding any kind of, you know, movement of smoke there too. So. It's going to be hard to get completely out of people's, out of people's hair. You know, I will say I don't, I don't like burning as I, not like we have a lot of options here. If we can. Investigate this without a whole lot of effort, you know, or if another city is willing to investigate the incinerator piece and see what, you know. What pragmatically might come together or, or doesn't. But you know, we don't. We don't want to be creating, you know, unnecessary air pollution if we can help it. It's just, I wouldn't rule out the discussions of the incinerator and pursuing. You know, an understanding what that would look like as well as whether there's any funding opportunities or mutual aid agreements. I know the league of, of the south. Southern Minnesota League of Municipalities, when there, was at their fall meeting convened last year, there was a session held by a public works professional who was, was all about mutual aid agreements for. Equipment. And I thought, well, how does that make sense? When you need your plow, so does the next town, right? But with something like this, I could see, you know, see it functioning. Maybe comes from quite a distance. I don't know. You know, if we can, if we can afford to have a, a portion of that and utilize it, you know, if it has the right capacity a couple of times a year, well, then it could come from halfway across the state. It wouldn't have to be a small neighboring community. Maybe, maybe it comes from a, a community that has the appropriate resources. To own that. I really don't know. I mean. Almost seems too good to be true, but I, I wouldn't, wouldn't rule out, you know, furthering what we know about it.
Lake City was going to lease it for a month and it was, I think it was, I think they got a quote of $16,000 or $17,000. So that, you know, that's kind of. Yeah, that's kind of out of the question. I mean, if we're going to invest that amount of money, if we could split it between a few communities, that'd be more bang for it, but to purchase that, so.
Did they give you a sense whether they would be able to, whether they would need it for that month? I don't, I mean, that seems like a long time to have equipment like that or.
Yeah, Lake, well, Lake City is a bigger town. They got more room and they got a larger brush dump.
Sure, okay.
And the grinder, the grinder came down and left them with a big mess too.
Okay. Well, yeah, I would guess there's a lot of communities in the same boat because, you know, if the metro is being, if, you know, if these businesses can serve the metro and, and. That's all they need, you know, to survive there. We're not the only ones in this position.
Instead of paying to haul the brush out there, I'd like to see if we can just pay some lease money to Coner Brothers so that. We can make the city brush dump out on their property. So people bring their brush right to the site there.
Oh, yes, Craig, I just, I just meant the temporary in, in between now and whether we figure this out in the, you know. In a month or two, or if it's going to be next spring, we're going to have a decent stockpile. And when I, when I priced out hauling away what we had left over to burn it elsewhere. That, the estimate from the hauler was looking at $30,000 to $40,000. Just to haul it across town. So I was like, my God, every time I turn around, it's, the price is going up. So.
Hey, Tony, this is Dean calling or talking. Say, if we're going to move this out to the Fowlsticker Farm, which is across from the school. Maybe we should get, should get a hold of Greensville Township and see if they want to chip in. Being that pretty few residents that are just coming in anyway.
Yeah, they're having the same problem. Especially after we started closing our borders a little bit.
Yeah, well, I would look into that.
Okay.
Is that sufficient direction for now, Tony? Or do you need anything further from us?
No, we're, that's good.
Okay. And don't hesitate to keep us posted so that when residents, you know, want to know where this is at, it's good for us to kind of be aware, you know, that. This isn't something clearly that can be solved overnight. Unfortunately, I know it frustrates people, but it's a little more complicated than, than we'd like it to be. All right. So now the Sterling, 2001 Sterling Plow Truck Hydraulic Line Repair, I won't even attempt to explain this one, Tony, because you've done so very well in the. In your summary in the, in the agenda packet, but ultimately you're recommending that due to higher level costs of maintenance. To the truck since 2018, staff recommends fixing only what needs to be repaired on the truck and looking to replace. As the current CIP plan indicates. Anything else you want us to? Debate or consider?
No, we, we did talk about this at the street commission and we weighed the odds of. Spending 10,000 to 15,000 on this truck and how long are we going to keep it afterwards? And they, it, it being that the truck is, is going to be 20 years old, it's probably time to, to upgrade. Instead of pushing us back and kind of pushing our other equipment back at the same time. So they told me to spend $3,000, maybe 4,000 if, if. If I need to and fix only necessary repairs instead of replacing all the hydraulic lines. And go from there. So. I kind of wanted you guys to be aware in case, because when I get to that $5,000 mark, I should have council approval. So I just kind of wanted to, to put it before you that we had a discussion about this and then the longevity of the truck. So.
Great. So you are making a recommendation. Do we need a resolution here? Because you don't have an actual purchase recommendation at this time. You're just keeping us.
I don't think so. It's more informational than.
That's really helpful. Then we all can keep up. All right. So we do now have a budget update from Tyler. Tyler, you want to share with us what you've learned with the additional. Budget work that's happened since our, I guess we didn't, we didn't talk budget since the budget workshop meeting. So what shall we? Be informed of?
Yep, an update on the 2021 budget process. So if you remember, the preliminary levy increase was set at 8% during the September city council meeting on September 1st. Myself and department heads have continued to look at the budget throughout September and the first week of October. And the current version we have shows a 6.9% levy increase. The main drivers of that were our actual health insurance rates came in. We had put an assumption of 5% and unfortunately the actual increase is closer to 9.7%. So that drove up the levy quite a bit. And we have been able to get it back down through discussion with department heads, eliminating where we can. And we also reduced the CIP contribution from 75,000 to 50,000. So a $25,000 savings there. So with that 6.9% increase that we're at, I know that's still a lot higher than. A lot of you are looking for. One thing to note is that due to this decertification of TIF 3. We can increase the levy by 57,000 with no impact to the tax rate. That effectively gives us a 3% cushion. Which means we're, of that 6.9% that we're at, the taxpayers would only be accountable for 3.9% of that. And then going forward, myself and department heads will continue seeing where we can cut, where we can control expenses. Also the TIF ending and new home construction should continue to help increase tax capacity to lower that as well. And then one, one final point I had, I know we were looking. To get closer to 0, 1 or 2%, which we can still strive for. Just want to point out that if we cut too much expenses, we may. Risk reducing the quality of services that we have to provide our residents. And so we've just. Wanted to make a note here that we don't want to cut so low that our quality of service is going down. So that's what I've got for updates. Any questions on where we stand? We'll definitely be continuing to look at this throughout October and November.
I'll just point out a couple of things that I had questions about for Tyler, which he answered before the meeting. And that was, you know, that the increase in insurance. We're still, we're still asking, there had been some discussion about whether we would. Try to add a COLA, add a cost of living increase for staff. That is, they, that has not occurred. So that still remains at zero COLA increase for staff. So then my concern was then with the additional actual insurance costs versus projected, was there an increase then? Sort of doubling the impact or I should say increasing the impact on staff. And Tyler clarified, no, the 9.7 increase. Is, is, is the city's burden. So we're not asking people to not take a cost of living and have their premiums go up. Not that not taking a cost of living isn't significant, but I was concerned about that double hit. And then just for clarity, because I was at work and I didn't have the budget in front of me, you know, I was, wanted to remember what we had actually budgeted versus what we have in the. Position announcement for the administrator. We have that budgeted at 88,000. And that is, you know, that's not, to be, to be frank, that's, that's not necessarily competitive with. Other cities in terms of a salary survey that we've been privy to. So just, just keep that in mind, you know. The bulk, government is people. So our costs are heavily personnel and fringe. And so while, you know, we want to work this down. I'm not just concerned about service. I'm also concerned about, you know, that how much further can you, can you whittle when they, when, you know, the costs are significantly personnel and fringe? That's just, that's all I had for Tyler beforehand. I just wanted to air that in case anybody had some of the similar, similar concerns or observations.
I have a question. I'm not sure if. Can the, any money from the CARES Act be used for budgeting? To offset?
Um, yeah, we discussed CARES Act later in the meeting. It cannot be used for revenue reduction, but it can be used to offset certain expenses. And we have a breakout of what we're looking to put that towards. A resolution for that on tonight's agenda as well. That all has to be, oh, I'm sorry. That all has to be used by November 15th. So that doesn't really carry over into the 2021 budgeting very well.
All right. Yeah, that's a.
Anybody else? I know there was, you know. Very serious concern about making sure this doesn't stay at eight, which it won't. And, you know, thanks for the discussion too about, you know, the effective. Taxpayer accountability is, is currently 3.9. Does anybody have any questions about that or comments?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that 3.9% just to put it in perspective for a market value home of 150,000. They see about a $2.30 increase per month. So. Just to put it in perspective.
Yeah. Can you send out a little spreadsheet? It doesn't have to be the entire budget, but just something to. Let us know exactly where the money is coming from and where.
Sure.
How you're doing this.
Okay, sounds good.
You know, one pager is fine.
Yep, just a summary. That would be helpful. Also useful, if, and that's also useful frankly, if, if members of the public are curious in terms of a. Transparent process. I think sometimes, you know, looking at a budget is just total overwhelm for a lot of, for a lot of citizens. They don't. Even for us as, you know, as members of council, we don't have the proximity to the department's work. You know, we think, I think we, we think we have sufficient proximity and we take it seriously, but it's, it's a lot to digest. So a, a one pager is really useful for, for the public as well.
One thing I've noticed that I wanted to kind of mention because I wasn't at the first budget workshop, but. Lot of our supplies and parts that we buy, you know, the prices aren't going down. And. If, you know, picnic tables, we're going to go out and buy $600 worth of lumber. Well, it's now $1,000, you know, for lumber. So. It's kind of hard. Fuel, fuel is about the same. It's kind of stayed flat all year, but. It, if, you know, like my big ticket items is parks, street maintenance, fuel and snow removal. You know, what do I touch? What do I leave? I mean, I can, I can cut a bunch of money out of here and be over budget next year. So it's kind of hard for, for us to, for me, I guess, to kind of nail anything down specific unless. You know.
Right. Yeah, Tony, and I, I want us to be, I, I just want everybody to be comfortable airing their concerns and there's, there's no kind of, you know, silly question or uninformed question here. But I also want, you know, the department heads to know that, you know. We, we have to be realistic. We can't just wish to get to a certain percent point. I mean, we, we would desire it to be zero, of course. I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. But it's a, it's a basically a vote of non-confidence in our, in our departments. If we try to, you know, if we think we're going to find some big category to eliminate because, you know, you, you've built lean budgets. We don't have programs, you know, and, and there's just not a lot. That isn't basic services that we can, that we can monkey with. And so. I just wanted us to be able to have this continuous dialogue.
Tony, that 6,000 that you just said for picnic tables for wood, that's not in the budget, is it?
Uh, not 6,000. It was. So every time we buy a batch of lumber, which we did, I think it's probably been three or four times this year. I was talking about treated lumber for the picnic tables. And just round numbers in my head say we spent $600 for a stack of treated lumber. You know, now we're paying 900 or $1,000. And so, I mean, building supplies have went up. That's just one, one small category. Not 6,000, it was 600.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at is can't we look at line items like that and purchase it with the care fund? And then we don't have to put that in the budget? Just like we're doing with computers tonight and.
Yeah, CARES Act funding will be used for items that are specifically related to COVID. So really public works wouldn't fall into that category at all.
Well, I know. Well, I know we got like the computers made and something else. Is there nothing else in the budget that we can use the CARE funds for to reduce that budget?
Yeah, they would. So we're helping to offset expenses in 2020. But CARES Act funding, at least this round of CARES Act funding, cannot be used for 2021 budgeting. Tim, you're muted.
Sorry, I was saying that we have to spend these funds in the next month. So we can't, we can't, we won't. It has no impact on the 2021 budget, basically, Dean. And as, as Tyler pointed out, there's restrictions on what's eligible. But we have a good discussion of that coming up here of some legitimate needed qualifying costs that would, that we can cover in the 2020 fiscal year with CARES funds. Anything further related to the budget? And Tyler, again, will you outline for us, will we, anything substantial for us in November or will we make a decision? Will our next point of discussion on this be December?
I can give another summary update like this.
I think that would be great, for sure.
And then, I don't know, try to approve it in December so we can see where we're at, at the November meeting to see if we're satisfied or if some type of another budget meeting might be needed. But we'll give it another month maybe and see where we're at.
Great. Yeah, those healthcare actions are no, are no fun, but that's a big one to have there. So that really helps to know that.
Yep.
Anybody else on budget? Otherwise, we'll move to the 2021 police contract.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that I think the Wabashaw County levy increase is currently zero. And I think the school district is zero. So there'll be a perception out there that Wabashaw isn't doing, well, the city of Wabashaw isn't doing enough.
Okay, all right. And we will discuss this again. So I, I think as much budget updates as possible. And thanks Tyler for, for keeping us tuned in and that, that one page summary will be helpful and might, might precipitate some further questions before November. Okay, item general business 10-2 is the 2021 police contract we've been awaiting. And so as you recall from your agenda pack, we have a red line version of that police contract. I think it's summarized here. Oh, maybe not. I can, there were, you know, a few changes. The, there's a, obviously a year change and then a change related to, sorry, I'm not scrolling fast enough, pay. Here we go. There's an updated section. Employees may elect to cash out accrued and unused vacation hours in excess of their annual accrual limit based on years of service vacation. Hours cashed out pursuant to this provision should be paid at 50% of the employee's regular rate of pay. That was a change. And then I think all the way at the end. There's a false arrest insurance and indemnification section essentially saying employer, the city shall furnish legal counsel to defend police officers in all actions brought against them to recover damages for alleged false arrest or alleged injury to a person, property or character. When such alleged false arrest or alleged that person, property or character was a result of an arrest made in good faith by an officer in good faith in the performance of his or her official duties and reasonable costs and expenses of defending, defending such suit, including witness fees and reasonable counsel fees, as well as the second section. Similarly saying the employer, the city shall defend and indemnify employees for damages, including punitive damages claimed or levied against the employee, provided that the employee was one, acting in the performance of the duties of his or her position. And two, was not guilty of malfeasance in office, willful neglect or of duty or bad faith. And other than that, I didn't see. Oh, and then of course, increase the step information on December 31st, 2021, each employee shall advance one step forward on the wage schedule from the step he or she was at on December 30th. Do staff have any additional information from these labor negotiations that we should be aware of?
We do not.
Did we get an opinion from our city attorney, especially in 26.1 and 26.2? The indemnification insurance. You know, I have.
No, it, it came, this information was late from the representative and I had to email her last week in order to get it onto council's agenda. So it came to us the same day that was added, which I believe was Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't get the red line version. The only thing red line was the table of contents. So I had to call the chief.
Did you get my email this afternoon for, with the red line version?
I'm busy this afternoon. No, I haven't looked at emails this afternoon.
Okay.
So if we look in the history of what's been going on lately around in the cities around Minnesota and around the country, people can get sued, the police department can get sued for, in the city, for millions of dollars in the case of a wrongful death or wrongful injury. I would like to have the city's attorney review this language to make sure that we're in alignment with what other cities are doing.
I would agree with Craig on that.
Yeah, I think the, the agreement is, everything's real reasonable, but it would be smart to have them look at that first.
I would think they could do so in a prompt fashion, don't you think, Wendy?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I think that makes sense. Anybody have anything further? Otherwise, the changes are straightforward.
I was going to ask, who was on the committee to review this? Was it, was Jeff, were you on there again?
Yeah, I had some initial conversations with that.
Did any of that come up, that indemnification or anything? Did they talk about that?
I had meetings with them directly, just some emails between Jane and Chad.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So we should have our attorney look at it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Even if it's boilerplate, I'd like this opinion on what that means to have that boilerplate language in the contract, just so we all understand it.
And how it compares to other small cities around the state.
Okay, anything further on that item? Do we need, time wise, Wendy, do we, do you need a resolution to, to accept this contract with the city attorney's review or do we have time to address that in November?
I think we have time to address it. It looks like it calls out for the 2021 year.
That's how I read it too. Okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't some kind of a timeline that I didn't understand. Okay, great. So CARES, CARES funding. Perhaps Tyler, you want to give us an overview for these items so that we have context for how the three CARES related agenda items, 10, 3, 4, and 5 relate to one another? And I guess I should say one thing related to this item that's going to come up in a minute about the polling place location. We did discuss and I think had pretty good agreement that it would be good to potentially cover CARES, cover any transportation for voters needed because of the polling place location with, possibly with CARES funds. And I remember Mike saying that would be eligible. We would just need a resolution, it would need to be included in our resolution.
Sure. So we've got, we do have a resolution for our CARES Act funding put together. But before we can look at that, we do need approval of a couple of purchases which are built into that resolution. So the first one is some laptops. And there's eight total laptops. Two of them are rugged laptops for the ambulance. Latitude 5420 rugged laptops from Dell. So those would go in the ambulance rigs. And then we have six. I'm sorry, we have, yeah, six. Other Dell laptops, two would be for the ambulance department, one for the new city administrators, one for the public works department, one for utilities and one just a backup computer to have at city hall in case anyone's goes down or extra work from home capabilities are needed. These are able to be covered for under CARES Act funding. The rugged laptops due to their use for COVID COVID-related runs and the other ones would all increase our work from home capabilities. Some departments don't have the ability to work from home right now or limited capabilities to work from home. So if approved, these would all be covered under CARES Act funding with the justification to improve the city's work from home capabilities.
I'll make a motion to pass the computer part of this funding.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Craig and a second from Brian. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote by roll.
Walrick?
Yes.
Sula?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Boyer?
Can you say Meyer?
Yep.
Yeah.
Woodley?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Okay, and now we have our resolution, Tyler. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Actually, we have the, the ambulance cats first.
Oh, thank you, thank you. The cats, of course. Yes, let's go back to that.
Okay.
Jumping between Zoom and my agenda and losing my place here. Thank you. And, and did you want to say anything about these costs that you'd like us to understand?
Well, basically, the cats that I'm asking to replace are 13 to 14 years old. The maintenance costs are starting to eat us up, or not really eat us up, but they're going to start increasing over the years as we keep going. Basically, we're after the safety for the, the staff. The lifting sometimes gets to be a little too much. And we're trying to, trying to keep the injuries, the possible injuries down. Because that is one of our major deals in EMS is being hurt trying to load a patient in the back of the ambulance. So with these cops, they're basically going to, we can bring the cop to the ambulance and they'll actually physically load it in the ambulance for us. An arm will come out, grab the cop, pull it in. So there will be no more lifting into the ambulance. It also helps with any kind of injury of lifting with your back, straining. The larger patients, it gets very strenuous and we have lower, lower amount of employees being able to step up because we want to keep PPE down and all the other COVID issues. Basically, our cops are, as I said, 13, 14 years old. They're gonna, their life expectancy is 15 years, 10, 15 years. If you have any further questions, you can ask me if you like.
So really, I just want to add it to Ed's comments, you know, so this is extremely essential equipment. I think it's going to be immensely helpful, especially with the COVID. We don't have as many people on runs as we used to, just with cops and fire departments and so on. You know, and the other thing I would point out is if we put these in our new, our rigs and we got new rigs down the line, four or five years from now, when they're scheduled, one of them is we can move them into that rig as well. So to cost savings on that department as well. So that was just a couple of points I, I would want to point out.
I'll just add too, that these cats are in our CIP plan in a couple of years out. So this will, if we use a CARES Act funding, we can take them out of the CIP and then we'll be in a better situation there too.
I just want to support Ed and Tim's thoughts on this. I think it's a smart move. We've been kind of lacking on this for a number of years. This, this load system has been out and it's not a new concept. Most of the services around here are using it. And it's exactly right. It takes one person to load now rather than the two or three people that we'd need, you know, late in the night, trying to load somebody in, at a, at a home or something. So I, this is a, a good thing. This is a good way to utilize that care money.
I would agree with that.
The idea of being able to eliminate that from the CIP plan, I'd just go ahead and make the motion to approve this right now.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from, great, we have a motion from Brian and I heard a second from Dean. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what's the total cost then?
So the total cost, I am not, I'm not looking to go with the cheaper one. The striker is actually $400, $416 more. That is currently what our, our crew prefers. So the total cost of that specific thing would be 70, that specific cot would be 79,000 for two of them.
And is that including installation?
That's installation as we, that's everything.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Anything further? Otherwise, we can take a roll vote.
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yeah.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Okay.
I'd like to thank everybody for helping out with that. I truly appreciate it. It'll help our crew a lot.
Good. We, we need you guys in good, in a good place. So now we have our CARES Act resolution. And Tyler has provided us with a drafted resolution. I just wanted to point out again, I think if we are going to include any transportation related to the polling change, which is relocated because of COVID, we should include that in the use spreadsheet.
Do we have any idea how much that cost is going to be?
I do. I, Lisa sent me an email today that she got in contact with Hiawatha Transit. And they're only able to provide one bus at $50 an hour from the hours of eight in the morning until seven at night. I guess that gives some option and availability to provide that service at least some hours. I mean, a good chunk of the polling day. So I, you know, you're looking at $500, something like that.
I would recommend adding that as well as anything we have to do for advertising or signs at that as well. I, which I can't believe would be more than a couple hundred dollars, but I would agree with that.
And we'll talk about this in more depth. We also talked about a banner, if there's any cost there, maybe multiple, you know, maybe at both locations, redirecting. And then also, you know, I think as soon as possible, acknowledge, you know, advertising that that will be the new Ward 3 location. Probably also clarifying which one is Ward 1 and which one is Ward 3, since they are sort of co-located. But yeah, those additional costs. If that's possible, you know, there's, we're like right at the exact amount of the funding that we're able to receive. So obviously, maybe it won't all fit perfectly, but whatever can be.
Come out of one of those items, we've already approved a few on that list, it's going to come out of ambulance pay or something like that.
Yeah, there's, most of it too with that food shop relocation. We have them down for 20,000. They were able to get a separate grant for 10,000. So we're not expecting them to, or they won't be using that full 20. So we should have like $7,000 to $8,000 available that the food shop won't be using.
Good. So I can read the resolution. If anybody would like to entertain a motion. We are resolution allocating Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funds, known as the CARES Act, to local government activities. This is resolution 22-2020. Whereas on March 27th, 2020, the President of the United States signed into law the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, known as CARES, that was passed by the US Congress in response to the COVID-19 pandemic outbreak. And whereas the CARES Act included $339.8 billion in relief on the COVID-19 pandemic in the United States, dedicated for state and local governments. And whereas on June 25th, 2020, the Governor of the State of Minnesota by executive order and under current emergency allowed for distribution of 841 million in CARES Act funds to counties and cities within the state of Minnesota in accordance with the US Treasury guidance, based on a per capita basis. And whereas the city of Wabashaw has received $189,481 in CARES Act funding. Whereas the CARES Act allows local governmental units to expend funds on costs that are necessary expenditures related to, related to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas the CARES Act allows local government units to expend funds on costs that have been not, that were not included in the most recently adopted budget or were budgeted for but have been incurred for a substantially different use from what was intended as a result of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas a state, territorial, local or travel. whereas a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health and public safety employees are payments for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas the CARES Act allows local governmental units to expend funds on costs that were incurred during the covered period of March 1, 2020 to November 15, 2020. Now therefore be resolved, the Wabashah City Council allocates $189,481 of CARES Act funds under the following categories. And we have an amended spreadsheet. Do we have a motion?
Second.
I missed who was first. I heard John second. Was that you, Tim first?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Tim. We have a second by John. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so what about the money for the funding of the buses?
What I heard them saying is because the food shelf won't need the full 20, there should be sufficient funds to cover that. And then maybe we can have a little more substantial discussion about logistics about that in our added agenda item. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, but I'm wondering if we should just include some wording in there or in, at least in that list of items that get included in the list of items.
Motion includes that, doesn't it? It's an amended motion. That's what I was catching.
Right, an amended spreadsheet with that cost. I meant that, but I wasn't, I wasn't clear, Craig. An amended spreadsheet that includes these additional costs as described related to that polling place relocation.
I'm not sure if anybody checked, but I think you could apply to Wabashah County for additional funds if needed out of their pool. It'd be a question. I'm not sure, but I know that they're, they got some expenditures coming up, but they had a larger amount than we did by far.
Yeah, so I was in the process of reaching out to the county to see if they had funding available. And if so, what would be applicable uses for that that the city might have?
Good. Thank you, Tyler. Thanks for bringing that up, Tony. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All right, we can take a vote by roll.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Moyer, we got him. Sula?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes.
Thanks to staff and department heads for thinking about the best use of these funds. I think it's appreciated by everybody. Now we have to reschedule our November council meeting because of the election. Do you have a precedent, Jess, about how we've, yeah, let's see, preferably Wednesday or Thursday of the first week to still allow the staff to pay warrants in a timely fashion? So if you have your calendars for that first week?
If there's one of the possible.
Wednesday is your preference?
Any one of those work for me.
That would be Wednesday, the fourth. That works for me. Any conflicts? Do we have a motion to set that meeting date for November, Wednesday, November 4th?
Move. Our move.
Okay, we have a simultaneous, we'll say Dean first, Jeff second, and we'll take a roll vote.
Sula?
Yes.
Woodley? Walrick?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes.
And Moyer?
Yes.
So we will also at the next meeting, you just schedule another meeting in November to canvass, and that will have to be done by the 12th. Or the 13th. That'll have to be done by the 13th of November.
Okay.
The 11th is a holiday. So it's pretty much kind of falls to the 12th. You could schedule it now. So due to absentee voting, they have to leave the polls open to accept the votes for up to seven days after the election. So technically, votes could come in until the 10th, 11th is a holiday, and we have to be canvassed by the 13th.
Okay, so you need us to have a meeting on the 12th?
Ideally.
Yep.
It could be a daytime, as long as you have a quorum.
That is a Thursday. I would have that available.
That works for me.
Works for me.
Can we do it at normal time?
You guys can take the time.
Regular 7 o'clock? And then that would work for you, Brian?
Yeah.
That's
7:00 PM? Is it 7:00 PM? Yes?
Yep.
Works.
Okay, looks like we would have no trouble with a quorum. Okay, so November 12th, 7:00 PM. As well knock that out and get it on people's calendars. Okay, very good. And then we had an additional item to address some of these details related to the polling place moving, and that's General Business 10-7. So as a recap, as everybody remembers, but we didn't have, the meeting came up quickly, so we didn't, I don't believe we had anybody from the press there. We had a request from Sentra, which manages the Maple Grove Apartments, which is the polling place for Ward 3, to locate those, that polling place elsewhere due to a concern for the safety of their 23 or 24 residents. We had a significant debate about whether there could be alterations made to that polling place or, you know, pragmatic solutions that would allow for it to stay in place. Everyone reckoning, everyone on council recognizing that a late change to a polling place is not, you know, not something we take lightly. But we arose, we arose at a conclusion that it really couldn't be effectively done and still, you know, meet the safety concerns of the management organization. So the decision was made to get a resolution adopted to relocate the Maple Grove polling place for Ward 3 to the Wabashah Fire Hall Garage. And that, of course, is co-located with the Ward 1 polling place, which is in the, I don't know what you just, what do you call that, Darren? The sort of the meeting room of the fire hall would be, would remain? Is that, what do you, what do you call that space?
Yeah, that'd be the meeting room or the training room.
So the Ward 1 polling place remain where it has always been, where it has been historically? The, they would actually allow for more space than would have been available at the Maple Grove Apartments. We would have two, it sounded like from Jess and Wendy's understanding of the requirements of the polling place, two adjacent polling places with a co-located entrance. Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay. And then we had recommendation for different communication angles. The Sentra management team is agreeing to, of course, communicate with their residents about that location change, arrange for residents who have needs for transportation. I think city staff committed to a Facebook, you know, multiple Facebook posts probably. I know you guys are working on Notice the Paper. And was that going to be sort of an outlined box ad?
Yeah, we were discussing a box ad, and we were discussing putting it in the advertiser and the shopper, because that newspaper is free, where a lot of people don't honestly have a subscription to the Herald, but we would also have it in the Herald.
Right, I support that. And then we discussed banners. Like I said, if the banners can get up sooner rather than later, that's a highly traffic intersection with a lot of services there. So people who maybe don't have any idea, haven't even thought about where their polling place is, will see that it's Ward 3 and Ward 1 co-located there.
We also discussed doing an actual ad in the newspaper in the Herald.
I think that's a good idea.
And then I have reached out to the county in regards to seeing if we can put it out on code red, because we should be able to specify the actual district and send it out code red to anybody that signed up for that notice of polling place change.
Right. And of course, the county has, I think it's the city or the county that's obligated to notice the registered voters.
That's done. The PVP card should be out.
Okay. Okay. Any, anything else related to the transportation issue that needs to be debated or questions anybody had about other ideas that were floated and how that's coming along?
How do you, do we, we should probably mention the transportation in our advertisement, right?
Sure, I think so.
How do you, is it just going to run back and forth? Are they going to have to call for a ride? I mean, do we have any idea what we want to do there?
I would defer to, yeah, I don't know what the Hiawatha Valley would require.
Okay.
Just based on their, I'm just thinking about their own COVID precautions.
Yeah. Maybe 50 bucks an hour. I was thinking we could run it the whole day in like 20-minute increments or something. Maybe if someone went in to vote, they would have to wait for one cycle to get a ride back. But I'll see if there's any reason we can't just run it the whole time.
Yeah, the transit company should be able to help you figure that out.
Do we need a second bus? I mean, will polls close at 7:00 or?
Polls are open till 8:00. And they do all have the option to absentee vote at any time at the county currently.
Yeah.
I think one bus is sufficient if it's, if it's running all day.
Right. I think you're gonna, there's just gonna be diminished foot traffic at the polling places, period. I mean, that's everything that I'm hearing is, and that was my experience in the primaries. But yeah, if this, if people, you know, obviously, some type of signage at the Ward 3 former location that says, you know, this is circulating, circulating transit, available rides estimated each 20, you know, every 20 minutes or something. Then somebody doesn't show up and think, where's the bus? And then leave.
Can we put a notice on the homepage of the Wabashah website instead of having it buried in an elections page?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that tomorrow. And then it'll also be on the back of the water bills, which will be very short notice, but it'll be a last ditch, get it out there kind of thing.
It was, we were just shy of getting on the last water bill, but it just didn't have, the request didn't come soon enough to have that communication plan in place. So yeah, it's certainly a difficult decision, but I think we scratched our heads thoroughly to figure out whether, you know, the lesser of two difficult situations. You know, it isn't, it isn't, from a safety standpoint, it's an improvement over a constrained prior polling place. So there is some unadditional, unintended additional benefit, I think, from a, from a safety standpoint. Anything further on that item? Yep, go ahead.
I believe Sentra said that they would go door to door at the trailer courts and stuff. Did they not?
Yeah, I couldn't, I had a discussion with Buffy about it before our meeting, so I fully understood the constraints that she had, you know, concern with. And she had said that to me. I don't remember if she said it to the council, but we could follow up on that. Because of course, you know, it's not just, I know she'd said that certainly their properties, not just Maple Grove, but the adjacent Sentra properties.
Yeah, they said the trailer court.
Yeah.
That's where that came from.
Yeah. Okay, anything further? All right, then we will entertain a motion to approve the generous donations. This month, the library received $1,000 from Lori Hassinger and Seven Link, $100 from Jean Johnstad, $25 from Roland Holland and Mickey Nelson in memory of Pete Kloss, $25 from Paul and Mika Gens in memory of Pete Kloss, $25 from Bevan Bruce Hall in memory of Pete Kloss, $25 anonymous donation in memory of Pete Kloss, $25 donation by Roland Holland and Mickey Nelson in memory of Janice Lamy, a $25 donation from Bevan Bruce Hall in memory of Judy McNally, a fireworks donation of $500 from the Kellogg Fire Department Relief Association, a $100 police department donation by Heritage Laundromat, and a $100 ambulance donation also by Heritage Laundromat. Do we have, so whereas all such donations contributed or determined to be a benefit to the citizens of the City of Wabashah, and the City Council finds that it is appropriate to accept donations off, these donations as offered, do we have a motion to accept the donations? Tim and Craig at the same time for first and second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? And we'll take a roll vote.
Woodley? Walrick?
Yes.
Sula?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes.
You should be receiving your financials from Tyler. If you are not, make sure you reach out to him. Any further announcements this evening? We will keep you posted on what, what transpires, certainly personnel, because obviously there'll be action. Probably we can move towards some, some of the processes outlined in the checklist before our November meeting. And I look forward to that meeting. Maybe if Brian and Wendy and, and John and I could just stay on, just to solidify a date this week. Otherwise, we'd entertain that motion to adjourn.
Moyer makes one.
I second.
We have a first from Dean and a second from Tim. Any further discussion or we'll entertain a vote?
Sula?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yeah.
Walrick?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. That's a lot of content. Appreciate your attention and good discussion. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.